Okay. All right. Good afternoon and welcome to the March 22nd meeting of the Anderson Township Zoning Commission. My name is Brian Eliff. I serve as the Chair of the Zoning Commission. Due to the declared state of emergency in the nation in Ohio and the township. In the order of the Director of the Ohio Department of Health issued March 12th, 2020 in response to the COVID-19 emergency, this meeting is being convened telephonically. The agenda for today's meeting is available at our website, www.AndersonTownship.org. Under the news section, click Anderson Township Zoning Commission to meet via teleconference, March 22nd. Then click, click here to review case 2-2021. The Board will accept comments via phone and video during the public hearing for case 2, 2021 Anderson. We do ask that all participants mute their phones and only unmute if speaking. If you're going to speak, please state your name and address. It is also helpful to speak directly into your phone as opposed to using the speaker feature. At each of our board meetings, we encourage attendees to include, complete a sign-in sheet, including their name and address. If at some point during or after the meeting, if you would like to electronically sign in, simply send an email to SDonovan@AndersonTownship.org. Before the meeting begins, I would like to identify the appointed zoning commissioners that are participating in this meeting, including myself, Brian Eliff Chair, Ben Henson Vice Chair, Jonathan Gothard, Jay Lewis, and Ann McBride. Other personnel are joining in the meeting via phone, including Paul Drury, Director of Planning and Zoning, and Sarah Donovan, Planner 1. Each of us will do our best to remember to state our name before beginning to speak so that those joining us via phone can follow along. Thank you for joining us and appreciate your patience and understanding during these unprecedented times. And I'd like to ask the Board, does anybody have a change to the agenda? If not, could we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second that's not muted?
Second?
Roll call.
Sorry, did Ann second? Did Ms. McBride second?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Eliff?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we have minutes of February 22nd, 2021. Does anybody have any changes or corrections they would like to bring up? Would, would somebody like to make a motion then to approve those, please?
I'll make that motion. This is Ben.
Second, is there a second?
This is John, Iowa, second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Stane.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Eliff?
Yes. Okay, the next thing I'll do is outline the procedures the Commission will follow in hearing and deciding this matter. Under the zoning resolution, our subject, our decision is subject to appeal to the Board of Township Trustees and then to the Court of Common Pleas. As a result, we must employ different procedures from other cases that are typically presented to the zoning commission. Because this is a quasi judicial proceeding, the Commission will only receive evidence as to whether the applicant meets or does not meet the standards and criteria in the zoning resolution. We do not want to hear opinions, please, just facts relating to compliance with these standards and criteria. As a result, all persons presenting testimony before the Commission, whether for or against the applicant's position, may only do so after being sworn in. All witnesses will be subject to cross-examination. The staff will present a summary of the application. The applicant will then present its case. The Commission members may ask questions of the staff and anyone who speaks on behalf of the applicant. If an attorney presents the case for the applicant, the attorney is not sworn in and is not considered to be a witness. As a result, the attorney's statements are not considered as evidence. Evidence only comes in through the witnesses who testify before the Commission after being sworn in. The burden is on the applicant to present evidence that the application satisfies the standards and criteria for approval. After the applicant presents its case through its witnesses, all persons in the audience supporting the application will be permitted to testify one at a time after being recognized by the Chair. When all persons supporting the application are finished, those opposed to the application will then be permitted to testify after being recognized by the Chair. Anyone in opposition is represented by attorney. That party will go first, followed by any members of the audience. As stated previously, all persons wishing to testify, whether for or against the application, may do so only after being sworn in. When testifying, each person from the audience must state their name, address, and any affiliation to the case. All persons testifying will be limited to four minutes unless a Commission member requests that they be given additional time. All testimony is directed to the Commission only. No comments or questions are be direct to be directed to the applicant or anyone else in the audience. The Commission will only hear new non-repetitive evidence or questions. Should someone wish to show support of previous testimony, they may do so by following the testimony procedure and stating their support of the previous testimony. So we've got one case tonight. It's 2-2021 PUD. Will all persons who may give testimony, please raise your right hand and swear or affirm. And unmute yourself too, please. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
I do.
Thank you very much. And could staff, please, read the staff report for case 2-2021 PUD. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eliff. Tonight, we have our co-op Stefano Vissino, who will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Paul. Good evening, everybody. I will be presenting case number 221 PUD located at 7857 Beechmont Avenue. The applicant for this case is Alan Oakin from KBP Investments on behalf of Pre-Holdings LLC, which is the property owner. The location is 7857 Beechmont Avenue, and the zoning is E Retail business and also C Single Family Residence. The applicant is requesting a planned unit development approval to construct a 2,125 square foot Kentucky Fried Chicken drive-through restaurant with parking, lighting, and landscaping on the side of Cleaner Concepts Dry Cleaner. Next slide, please. For the proposed development, the applicant is proposing to demolish the existing structure and construct a Kentucky Fried Chicken drive-through restaurant. The proposed development is over 60% of impermeable surface ratio, so therefore requires a planned unit development approval. The applicant is also requesting a, the applicant is also requesting a variance to include a 105 square feet freestanding sign at the entrance of the property. And the property is permitted to have a freestanding sign of 60 square feet or less and a maximum height of 15 feet per Article 5.5 G1D and E of the Anderson Township zoning resolution. So for the site history, the current structure on the property was constructed in 1987, and the site has a history of automotive type use. In 1995, it was used as a towing business and in 2001 as an oil change business. In March of 2012, a zoning certificate was issued for the change of use, interior renovations, and canopy. The use was changed from retail quickly to dry cleaners, which employs no more than five persons and uses a non-petroleum-based cleaning fluid. His own certificate was also included for interior remodeling and exterior canopy of size 4 feet by 35 feet. In December of 2014, a zoning certificate was issued for a parking lot modification to include eight new, eight new parking spaces plus the restriping of existing spaces. This was issued due to a shared parking agreement with Krispy Kreme, which is the adjacent property to the west. This is the property map. As we can see, the property is adjacent to Immaculate Drive, which is a residential drive to the south and then to commercial, commercial properties to the east, west, and north. Next slide. This is a zoning map, so majority of the site is zoned as E Retail and then a portion of the southern side of the property is zoned as C Single Residence. This is an arrow map showing the, the current buildings on site and the neighboring properties. Next slide. And then there's a topography map. The property is mostly flat. This is a picture of the front of the existing building on the site. This is a picture looking east on Beechmont Avenue. And this is a picture looking west on Beechmont Avenue. This is a picture looking at the west side of the existing building. And then this is a picture looking north from Immaculate Drive, so we can see that sidewalk going, connecting to the property that we're talking about. This is a picture looking to the east, to the eastern property line towards Puppywood. And in this picture, we're looking south towards Immaculate Drive, so we can see the closest residence and some of the landscaping currently on site. And then this is a picture looking west towards the adjacent property, which is Krispy Kreme. This is the existing site plan, so this is a plan of what's currently on site to this day and what's going to be demolished. This is a proposed site plan, so we can see the proposed parking lot, the proposed drive-through and drive-through lane, and the proposed building. Here is a landscaping plan. Most of the landscaping proposed is along the entrance at the northern side towards Beechmont Avenue. It's mostly plants and shrubs, and then we have a couple of plants on the rear, on the southern side as well. And then this is the proposed lighting plan. These are the proposed elevations, so this one is the, the west, yeah, the western side of the building, which is going to be one of the entrances, and we can see all the doors and windows and the proposed wall signage as well. Here at the top, we have the drive-through side, which is on the eastern side of the building, and we can see the drive-through window along with the wall signage and other windows. And then at the bottom, at the bottom left, we have the front, an elevation of the front of the building with the proposed doors and wall signage, and then on the right side, we have an elevation of the rear of the building. These, this is the elevation of the proposed freestanding sign, so it's 15 feet by seven feet. And then these are the renderings submitted. Here we can see the western and front, western and northern side of the building. And then here we can see the drive-through side on the east side as well. So for the zoning resolution compliance, the proposed development is not compliant with the following articles of the Anderson Township zoning resolutions. Article 5.3K and Table 5.13, lighting for non-single-family users. The submitted lighting plan shows full candles exceeding .75 at the eastern and western property line adjacent to retail. The lighting plan shows full candles exceeding 0.1 at the southwest property line adjacent to the residential property. The proposed light poles exceed 24 feet in height. Articles 5.5G1, freestanding signs. The applicant is requesting a variance to include a 15 feet by seven feet freestanding sign at the entrance of the property. According to Article 5.5G1 of the Anderson Township Resolution, the premise is permitted to have a 60 square feet freestanding sign with a maximum height of 15 feet. Applicable, applicable, applicable plans for this case, the Anderson Plan. The proposal is consistent with the goals and objectives of the Anderson Plan and its recommendations for enhancing economic activities. The future land uses classification identifies the sites for general retail, which is the finest community of regional-oriented businesses uses that tend to locate along highways and relatively high traffic volumes. The proposed use meets this description. The application is consistent with the following. The application is consistent with the following goals of the Anderson Plan, economic development. The township will have an expanded and diverse tax base with additional land developed, developed for a mixture of non-residential users with a focus on attracting new businesses and promoting existing businesses. This businesses was previously in the township, but has now been for several years. And for land use and development, Anderson Township will be a well-planned, a well-planned community with a mixture of agriculture uses, residential neighborhoods, and commercial centers, and then, and an industrial base balanced with public uses, parks, and other recreational uses. For the Anderson Trails Plan, there is a sidewalk along Beechmont Avenue and a proposed sidewalk and crosswalk that provides a connection to the front door of the restaurant. There is also an existing sidewalk that connects to Immaculate Lane to Beechmont Avenue, and that will remain. For design guidelines, the proposal is consistent with the following elements of the Anderson Design Guidelines. For site planning, the proposed development provides an attractive, functional, and safe environment that is conducive to commerce and other primitive activities. For outdoor spaces, development plans should include outdoor use areas such as greens, plazas, and courtyards appropriate to the use of the property. The proposed development provides bike racks and a landscaped area around the property. However, the proposed development does not include outdoor seating in their, their proposed plan. For architecture, development should include a mixture of building materials. The proposed building is one material, EIFS, on all four sides. Staff believes that a mixer, the mixture of materials is important to maintain the character of the area. For signage, signage is encouraged to be erected at lower heights, maintaining clearance above landscaping and parked automobiles and below power lines and mature trees. The Beechmont Plan, the site falls within Neighborhood 4 of the Beechmont Plan. Recommendation for this neighborhood include the following. Neighbor character, substantial quality building materials, and varied massing of buildings. As mentioned earlier, the development is only showing one building material. Surrounding developments have modified their proposal before the zoning commission in order to meet the Beechmont Plan's recommendation of a mixture of building materials. Staff believes that it is important to continue to recommend this in order to keep the character of Neighborhood 4 of the Beechmont Plan. For access management, parking lot connectivity between neighborhood properties and closing unnecessary driveways. For landscape, street trees, landscape and walls along sidewalk. No street trees are proposed in this plan. Staff will recommend street trees. There we go. The equivalent of one tree per 30 feet. The proposed development achieves the following of the Beechmont Plan. The plan takes into account for a future, for a future cross-axis drive along the south side of the property that will connect to King Louis Court. The width is shown as 24 feet, but the width can be reduced to 20 feet to increase the pervious area. A zone change application for development on the property located at 7867, 7877, and 7887 Beechmont has been submitted, which also incorporates cross-axis to King Louis Court. The application will be heard by Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission on April 1st, 2021. The site is served by a cross-axis agreement with Krispy Kreme, the adjacent property to the west, as approved by the Anderson Township Zoning Commission in case 2, 2014 PUD. These are the recommendations. The proposed restaurants, the proposed restaurant development is consistent with E Retail District. The application is consistent with the vision and goals of the Board of Trustees as outlined by the adopted Anderson Plan. The used restaurant is compatible with surrounding retail lane uses. The size and physical features of the project area enable adequate protection of surrounding property and orderly and coordinated improvement of property in the vicinity in the area. The applicant has proposed street skate buffers surrounding the parking lot that provide a buffer to the surrounding properties. The proposed building is over 150 feet from the nearest residence. The parking lot is over 100 feet from the nearest residence, which are located on Immaculate Lane, and it's also screened by a privacy, a proposed privacy fence. The developer anticipates a four to six month construction period from demolition to store opening. Next slide, please. Thank you. The proposed development is serviced adequately and efficiently by essential public facilities and services that are located on Beechmont Avenue. There are no scenic or historic features. There are sidewalks being proposed to extend from Beechmont Avenue to the front entrance, to the front entrance of the building. Landscaping is used to separate pedestrians and vehicular traffic and parking. The development would not be detrimental to surrounding areas. The use fits within the commercial corridor and current use of the property, of the properties to the west, north, and east sides. The proposed development will provide additional landscaping and fencing to reduce visibility from the residential properties to the south. The development provides adequate open space, however, does not propose outdoor seating as recommended in the Beechmont Plan. The development is consistent with recommendations from Township, County, State, and/or, and federal agencies, and the development is consistent with the vision and goals as adopted by the Anderson Township Board of Trustees, except for the proposed building material and the proposed landscaping in the plan. The proposed, the proposed plan does not have a mixture of building materials to be consistent with the recommendation of the Beechmont Plan and the Anderson Township Design Guidelines. No street trees are proposed. Staff would encourage street trees to be consistent with the recommendation of the Beechmont Plan. Next slide, please. These are staff recommendations. The freestanding sign shall be a monument-style sign, not to exceed 10 feet in height and a maximum of 60 square feet, consistent with the recommendations from the Beechmont Plan and Design Guidelines. The lighting plan should be compliant with Article 5.3K and Table 5.13 of the zoning resolution. A minimum of four trees shall be planted along the Beechmont front edge consistent with Article 5.3L5 of the zoning resolution and recommendation from the Beechmont Plan. A mixture of buildings materials shall be added to all sides of the buildings consistent with recommendations from the Beechmont Plan and the Anderson Township Design Guidelines. That staff recommends that a vehicular easement shall be made for cross-axis to properties, to the properties to the east. Staff recommends that the proposed dumpster enclosure shall be consistent with the building materials and that a revised signage plan shall be submitted that complies with Article 5.5G2 of the zoning resolution and is consistent with the PUD plan elevation drawings. Staff recommends denial of the following variance, Article 5.5G1 freestanding signs. The proposed freestanding sign, 15 feet by seven feet at the entrance of the property. Staff is of the opinion that the variance is substantial, the dimension of the freestanding sign exceed the permitting dimensions by approximately 45 square feet. The character of the neighborhood, of the neighborhood will be altered by allowing this variance. Other newer construction sign in the vicinity consists with, consistent with the Beechmont Plan include the formerly Zuzu truck, Krispy Kreme, Coldwell Banker, Chicken Salad Chick, Dewey's, Firestone, and Tide. The property owner's predicament can be feasibly obviated through some method other than a variance. The sign can be redesigned to the permitted dimensions, which is a max of 60 feet, square feet, and a maximum height of 15 feet to be compliant with Article 5.5G1D and E, as well as additional signage that the applicant is proposing on the building. This parent intent behind the zoning requirement would not be observed by granting a variance. The Anderson Township Design Guidelines encourage lower monument-style signage that stays below the power lines, and the proposed development can construct a freestanding sign with the compliant dimensions in addition to approximately 250 square feet of wall signage. And these are the general standards for a PUD plan approval, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, great job, Stefano. Thank you for that, you know, very detailed report. So right now, we'll see if any of the zoning commissioners want to grill you with a few questions. Of course, you can always have Paul and Sarah help you out too. So, Mr. Gothard, did you have any questions for staff?
I have no questions, Steph. Thank you, Mr. Eliff.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Henson, any questions?
Hey, just a couple of quick ones. Is there a rezoning required to develop the, right there, the drive that's proposed to connect to the adjacent King's Court? With it being in residential, I doubt it, but considering its use, is that a necessity?
I do not believe there is one, but Paul, correct me if I'm wrong.
Right. Access drives are permitted in the residential zoning district, and there's the, the entire building and parking for this use is on the retail zone portion, so no, we did not feel a rezoning was necessary.
And that's, I guess I'm asking that too because it looks like the impervious surface ratio might exceed 60% in the residential portion. If we're looking at it that way, does that present anything?
We were interpreting as the entire parcel. That's how we, it's in the impervious surface.
Sure. The second question is just with regard to the renderings showing, I think in the report it says 250 square feet of wall signage, and I know a resolution defines sign with the word device in it, but are we, can you explain how you're interpreting their compliance with our sign rigs?
With the wall signage?
Yeah.
Or precinct, so with the wall signage, we use the facade that was the, the east or west facade is what we were using, either one of those, and 20% of the facade is which are allowed to have with a maximum of 250 square feet. So using that calculation, they were allowed a maximum of 250 square feet. There was some discrepancies on the elevation drawings in the sign package that was submitted, so that's why we did recommend that if this is approved, the signage package be resubmitted so that there's consistency between both and that it not exceed 250. The signage that was calculated, so in the front of the building, there is the logo or the Colonel Sanders logo as well as the writing underneath. There's a KFC on each of the, the right and the left facades or the east and west facades. All of the lettering is considered signage, so if it's KFC or if it says World Famous Chicken or the other logo, all that's included as wall signage.
And you're saying though, I think I was a little unclear, is the 200 Is the two hundred and fifty feet only the east and west, east and west facades and not the north, uh, front facade?
Yeah, the, so the, the way that it's interpreted is the entire building can have a maximum of two hundred and fifty square feet. So you can take that two hundred and fifty square feet and separate it into multiple signs, but the total of all signs combined cannot exceed two hundred and fifty square feet.
Well, that's, um, that's what I'm unclear on. I thought you started out by saying only the east and west were included in the tally?
Well, we calculate, we use one facade for the calculation for the entire building. So both of the east and west facades are about the same.
I see what you're saying. Okay. Okay. Thank you, Paul.
You know, we use one side for the total calculation for the entire building.
Yeah. And with the discrepancies, they're still at or under the two fifty?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Mr. Henson. Um, Ms. McBride, what, do you have any questions right now?
Well, I think Mr. Henson actually, uh, asked all of mine because I had some concerns about that access drive in the C Residence District. Um, so is the P U D then being applied to the C Residence District as well?
Yes.
Okay. And so that answers my question on how to require the fence, I guess. Um, I also had a question, uh, which Mr. Henson asked about the wall signage because it seemed like a lot more than two fifty to me. But, um, if staff says it's not, it's not. So, uh, that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thanks. And, uh, Mr. Lewis, did you have some questions?
Uh, just one, uh, the existing property has a garage toward the back right rear. Is that correct? A utility building or garage?
It, it's a garage.
And that will be torn down as part of this, replaced by whatever I see on the, uh, the proposed plan?
Right. The, the garage will be removed and that's a dumpster enclosure that you're seeing on the plane.
Okay. So there's nothing with that existing as far as what was stored in it at risk. It was, uh, just no, no depth to it, no basement, nothing, just flat.
Uh, we can ask the applicant that. The latest use was an accessory use to the dry cleaner. It was a, um, there was a seam, it was a separate business than the dry cleaner, but there was a seamstress in there at one point in time. I don't know if, if that's what's being used there now or not. It might just be vacant or being used.
Okay. Maybe it's a question for the applicant, but is this, are they, uh, affiliated in any, in any way with the previous, uh, uh, K F C that was on the other side of Beachmont down about, I don't know, a few thousand feet?
That would, that would be a question for the applicant as well.
All right. That's all I had.
And then I can, I can provide, I can provide a little bit more clarification on the parking in the residential zoning district if you'd like. If you want the section that we were using, um, there is allowance for parking in residential for commercial property. Um, if approved through special zoning certificate by the Board of Zoning Appeals or in this situation could be approved by the zoning commission as part of the P U D process. Staff interpret though that this was not being used for parking, that it was just a cross access connection. So that's, that was our interpretation. If the zoning commission does feel otherwise, I can provide that section. And if you approve this, you know, want to incorporate that as a, a special use certificate, you can.
Okay. All right.
Oh, could I ask one question?
Go ahead. If anybody wanted to follow up on that, Ann, did you, or?
Yeah. So Paul, do we have the power to issue or approve a special zoning certificate as a zoning permission?
Yes, as part of the P U D process, since it's a public hearing, a part of the P U D process, yes.
Okay. I think probably we would want that's, that site.
Okay.
Um, okay. Thanks, everybody. And my question, Paul, um, or Stefano, Stefano was, did, did we have an elevation rendering of the, um, screening fence that is in there and I just missed it? Or is there not a, I saw a descriptor of it. I don't remember seeing anything what it looks like.
I don't believe it was provided.
Okay. Um, and the, the dumpster location, it's right on the property line. Is that, is that, uh, typical, uh, or is that something that because it's shown on the P U D, we're approving it that way?
Let me, uh, just confirm that it is retail to retail zoning, however, the use is a, um, is right of way because that's where the sidewalk is. Um, so confirm that.
So it's okay, you think, Paul, or you need to confirm?
Well, I'll confirm it, but retail to retail generally is a zero setback for a side yard?
Yeah.
It is adjacent on the other side of the right of way is adjacent to condominiums. There's owned retail, but they are residential use. So let me just clarify that.
Okay. Yeah. Check that and see if you can, uh, figure that out. That, that was all my questions, um, as well. So at this time, uh, we'd ask that the applicant representative, go ahead and, uh, present. I see Mr. Ocon, please correct me if I'm mispronouncing that, is there, he wrote the cover letter. Uh, were you sworn in previously?
I was.
Okay. And how do you pronounce your name?
Ocon, you nailed it.
I got it. Please proceed. And, and if you have anybody else on your team, please introduce them as well. Thank you.
Sure. I have, I have Brian Bender, uh, on, on the line too. Uh, he's my civil engineer for the project. So he, he gets in all the details and the weeds for me. But, um, no, we're, we're, this is kind of, uh, as you guys know, this site's a little, um, it's a little rundown and we're excited to be able to get in there and tear everything down. We are, um, it, there is a old garage in the back. I honestly don't know what they're currently using it for, but that's all going to be removed. Uh, the whole site's going to be all cleaned up. Obviously we know it was an oil change, so it has a basement currently in it. We're gonna, we're gonna get rid of all that and we're really gonna clean it up and do the best we can. We're showing the access, uh, cross access agreements that the planning is looking for. We have no problem with that. We're, to me, anything to make it easier for our customers to come in and out of the site, we're all for it. Um, all of the, the requirements that staff had, the concerns, we've already pretty much have already addressed. Um, off top of my head, the very first one was the parking lot lighting. We've already revised our lighting photometric plans, uh, and have that all ready to go back to make sure that we meet all the, all the requirements with the cutoffs at the, at the property line. So we have no problem meeting that in the heights. I think we have the original site photometric was the, the poles were a little bit too tall. Those are all now compliant. Uh, it still meets our lighting requirements. So we, we have no issues there. Um, the monument sign in the front, we've actually already revised it and sent, sent it to staff just to let them know that we have no problem meeting the, the fifteen foot, I think it was fifteen feet, uh, six, sixty square foot requirements. Again, no issues. Um, I did want to bring up the building materials. Uh, I don't know if you have the rendering handy that you can flip to, but there is currently a combination of, of different materials on each side. Uh, the, the bottom, the bottom portion of all the way around the building is brick. Uh, majority of the building face is Ephesus. The front, we have metal paneling where the kernel is. And obviously we have those large red metal awnings over, over the windows. So we do have a combination of brick, metal and, and Ephesus currently on the proposed plan. With, I think that one of the other, or other things that staff recommended was four trees, uh, at the, at Beachmont Avenue. Um, just looking at what some of the other neighbors have done, Krispy Kreme is a good example. They actually have some more green, uh, length than we do. Uh, I think personally, I think four trees is kind of squeezing it. I don't know if we can physically fit four trees. What I would like to propose is I have no problem doing two. And I'd like to take those other two, two trees and put them in the back so that gives us a little bit more of a buffer between us and the residential. So those are just my thoughts. I'd be more unhappy to squeeze four trees in there, but I, 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 I don't know how healthy that will be on the trees and, and, and future years, but, um, no problem either way. Those, that was just my thought was why not give the residential a couple more trees in the back just to kind of break up the, the spacing there. So. Other than that, we're excited. Um, we're excited to be in there, be part of the township. Oh, there was a question about, uh, the old K F C. Yeah, that, that was not us. We weren't owners at that time. So, um, honestly, I don't know the history of it and this is, I don't know why they closed or, or what it was, but we didn't have any relationship with that K F C location. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Like I said, Brian, my civil engineer is on the line. So if you have any technical questions, uh, Brian should be able to, to help us out.
Okay.
Oh, I know. One of, I'm sorry. One of the other question was, was the dumpster enclosure. I don't mind having that, having that as a brick face to match the brick that's on the building. That's completely acceptable. No issues there.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Mr. Ocon, I forgot to ask you, could you just state your address as well?
Oh, yeah. Alan Ocon, K B P Investments, uh, one zero nine five zero Grand View Drive, Suite three hundred. Overland Park, Kansas.
Overland Park. Okay, good. So, um, at this time, I'd like to, uh, if, if you're done, I'll turn it back over to the zoning commissioners. They'll probably have a few questions for you. Um, Mr. Lewis, do you want to start off?
Um, sure. I, it was, uh, I guess we have some updated information, which is good, happened to do with, uh, uh, the signage, which was a, a personal issue. Is that, is that, uh, style that's represented in the, in the picture? Is that the new, a new branding of K F C with the monument sign with the, the Colonel?
Yes. Yes. Everything's about the Colonel face right now. Yes.
Okay. No, and, and the, uh, the trees, I, I appreciate you, you're working with the zoning commission. I'll leave it to the other commissioners to, uh, determine if that's, that's acceptable, but I have no questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. McBride, do you have any questions?
Um, I don't, I've got a, a question for staff that I'd like to ask when we're done asking the applicant questions, please.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Henson?
Just a couple of quick ones, and I know the first one is a little bit silly, but I was doing some, uh, drive-by surveys of other K F Cs in the Cincinnati area with this newer, uh, branding. And I just want to clarify that the, the renderings that you're showing with, um, a customer door in the front way instead of a utility door, um, and the driveway, uh, ordering kiosk to the side instead of the front of the building, that these renderings are actually accurate to what we'll be seeing here in Anderson, um, without any modifications to the, to the layout or the flow of the process, ordering process.
Yeah, the, the rendering is a basic rendering. So, uh, this is, this is, I would always go by the drawings, but this is really to show you the style of the, of the, uh, the exterior and the colors and materials and things like that that would be on there. But with regards to door placements and stuff like that, I would refer back to the, to the site plan.
Uh, I need to do that. Um, are you able to, with referencing the site plan, are you able to tell us if there is going to be, uh, utility doors in the front of the building and utilities placed in front of the building?
Yeah. If you could go to the plan, I'll. Yeah. So you, that represents it pretty well. So, uh, you can see it, the renderings, or not the rendering, the actual drawings of the elevations are correct. So there is nothing, nothing, um, that, that actually the renderings match it perfect. So.
Okay. It's kind of difficult to tell here. I don't even see windows or doors on the building here, um, in the front of the building. I see the kind of articulation of the facade, but.
Yeah, the door is in the front.
Okay. Um, and specifically, if you're familiar, I'm talking about the Red Bank Road. Location seems like it's actually like backwards from the way that it should be with a lot of the stuff, um, on the street frontage instead of, uh, to the rear of the building. And I wanted to make sure that we aren't going to have that along Beachmont Avenue in Anderson. Um, and the other question I just had is a clarification and right here you can see it. Um, right to the north, the left side of the handicap spaces and then all the way down at the other end of that parking aisle, there are two of those larger honey locusts shown. And, um, the clarification is just that the schedule shows the quantity of one honey locust. So I wanted to make sure, you know, or determine which one of those was accurate.
I, uh, I don't know off the top of my head, I'll be honest with you. Uh, Brian, I don't know if you know, but, um, it doesn't matter to me, whatever, whatever staff recommends is fine.
Yeah, I think this was kind of a, a shot at, uh, you know, putting some trees on the site and such. So that I would go by the drawing instead of the schedule at this point. Uh, one of our big, big issues with putting the, the street trees in near the front was the, uh, the overhead electric line. So, you know, if, if, if those are required, we'd want to work with staff to try and find some trees that hopefully wouldn't get so tall as to, uh, require some butchering in the future. Um, and, you know, just try to match what's out there as best as we can, but, you know, also be mindful of, uh, what this thing could look like 10 years into the future.
Right. And that's why I think these two here as presented, uh, make sense. They're logical. I just wanted to make sure that there were two and not just one.
If you're, if you're familiar with the Krispy Kreme next door, they have two trees out, up front along the road. I would love to match those two. Um, like I said, I, I will be happy to squeeze in four. I don't think it's very healthy for the trees to squeeze four in. I'd like to take two trees and put them in the back.
Sounds good. Those are the questions I had. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thanks. Thanks a lot, Mr. Henson. I apologize. My, uh, feed froze up, so I had to re-log back in, but I don't think I missed, I came in, uh, on the discussion on the, on the trees. Um, so Mr. Gothor, did you have, uh, some questions?
Yes, a couple of questions. For the privacy fence on the south edge of the property, what is the style? Someone earlier on the commission has referenced that. Can you give us any information on the material and style of that fence?
This is, this is Brian.
Describe that?
Yeah, I, I apologize. I didn't, uh, give this information before. I'm Brian Bender with Civil and Environmental Consultants, fifty-eight ninety-nine Montclair Boulevard, Cincinnati, Ohio.
And Brian, just, uh, sorry to interrupt. Were you sworn in prior?
Yes.
Okay, please proceed. Thanks.
Sure. The, the fence along the back, uh, we're looking at either a wood or some kind of vinyl PVC, uh, white fence, uh, opaque, similar to what is behind Krispy Kreme currently. Uh, the fence location, we have it, uh, at the back of the property. We, as you see, we don't put it up against the property line. There's a, a few reasons for that is number one, we've got the little angle there with Immaculate and there's a, a guardrail there. Uh, but the other issue is, is we want to be mindful of the neighbor to the south. If you look closely, you can kind of see he's got some encroachments, uh, from his property, uh, coming across with a little landscape wall and some, uh, it looks like some overhang of the trees. And, you know, we want to be the good neighbors here and, and, and give that little bit of green space so he's just not feeling nice and tight up against that fence.
And then on the renderings, they show some roof mounted lights. That's what, could you inform us a little bit more on what those light fixtures are and the direction of the lights that they cast?
Sure, absolutely. They're, they're goose, they're goose deck lighting, lights. Um, they just shine down. Uh, basically they just light up a little bit of the building just to kind of, to kind of give it some character at night. Uh, they don't really, they're, they're not, they don't really light up the parking lot. They're not very strong. Um, but like I said, they just flat, they just light up the building at night to kind of give it a little bit of character, give a little bit of pop at night. But I can, I'd be more unhappy to give staff some cut sheets and stuff on those if they have any concerns.
And are they operational, you know, all night long or do they have a light setback?
No, they, they shut off at the same time as the parking lot lights do. So usually we shut up, the parking lot lights are usually shut off one hour after our store closes.
Okay. And are there any of those lights on the south side? Okay. And are there any of those lights on the south side?
That would be towards the back?
No. Yes, towards the back. Okay.
So.
All right. That's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Gothard. And my question was um, you guys said uh, that you've already revised your lighting. And there was comments from staff about uh, the poles being too tall and the foot candles. What is the revised uh, pole lighting? Cause twenty-four does seem pretty tall to me, especially uh, pushing back against the, that southern house. What, what's the revision looking like?
Alan, if I can jump in very quickly. I don't think the uh, the staff has seen any revised lighting calculations at this point. Uh, we've had our lighting designer look at this and, and uh, add some cutoffs and uh, the poles are essentially in the same spot, but we're trying to get the, the foot candles that are, you know, kind of seeping over the edge of the lines. We're trying to get that down to their, the, the maximum of zero point one at the residential line and zero point seven five at the commercial lines. But in any case, what we would like to do is we'd like the ability to work with staff on that just to make sure uh, what we have matches what your standards are and hopefully we can all come into agreement as, as to uh, what the final layout and, and pole heights and everything else would be.
I just, I just looked. The pole heights now are twenty-one and a half feet with the bases, no higher than twenty-four total with the base.
Okay. Um, that still seems a little high to me right up next to the residential there, but it's just. Let me continue to ask questions, which is the second one is on the building and we had some uh, uh, discussion in the staff report about changing a mixture of materials and stuff. And uh, I know when uh, I, I just searched for fun, uh, KFC new prototype and came up with something um, they were talking about and and it didn't, actually didn't look anything like this building at all. It, it was kind of, it looked tremendously different. And I'm just wondering on this building, is, is this um, I know all these KFCs have gone around and they're painting the buildings with giant red and white stripes. Honestly, they, they're, they're designing them so they look like one giant sign. So I think that the sign questions were valid. Uh, and I appreciate, and I, I do understand what Paul and Sarah are saying and Stefano about, you know, we've measured the signs, but but when you look at this, it's, it, it appears to be obviously designed to just be uh, like we do in the fast food area. You design the building so it, it communicates what it is, even without the signage. And um, I would just, I'm just curious, is, is this, is this the latest prototype of the building? It's not what I saw on the internet that had some twenty twenty and twenty-one uh, numbers on it.
Yeah, this is, this is current. Um, KFC corporate is always working on new prototypes. Uh, the prototype you might have saw, it could have been the one where they're, they're push-in, carry-out and, and drive-through.
That was.
This is a thirty-seater, so we plan on having a full dining room here. Um, it, this is one of, one of the choices that we have from corporate. So yeah, I mean, they're always tweaking it and trying to do new styles and stuff, but I think my, what you might have saw is the the major drive-through and takeout only concept.
Understand. Okay. Okay. Um, thank you very much. I don't have any more questions.
Mr. Chair, could I ask one question of the applicant that's kind of come to my mind since we've had this discussion?
Yes, please go ahead.
Uh, yeah, thanks. Um, so um, if we've got a, whether it's a, your plan say a wood six-foot-high fence uh, across the rear, and now you're talking about maybe vinyl, then how are you going to be maintaining that area south of the fence?
There, there's a few different ways to get back there. Uh, you know, if you want to use the public right-of-way, there's the sidewalk that's uh, just to the west. And then if you look all the way to the east side of the fence, we do have about a five-foot gap between uh, the property line and the fence. Uh, you know, that's just to get mowers and, and such back there.
So I guess my question was, um, so you will be maintaining, you will be mowing it, keeping it free of trash and so forth?
That will have to be the property owner's uh, requirement, yes. We're not going to, we aren't going to rely on the, the uh, the property owner to the south if that is what you're concerned with.
Yeah, no, it's your property. You're going to be maintaining it.
Absolutely.
And, and I, and I will, I can't remember for the life of me, I can't remember what the the, the fence type is at Krispy Kreme, but I have no problem matching it. So it's uniformal and it, it will just continue as, it won't look funny if it's a different material. So whenever Krispy Kreme has, I'll just match it.
Okay, wonderful. Thank, thank you. Um, so now at this part of the meeting, uh, we've, uh, I'd like to have uh, interested people, others speak on it. Um, and present your information to the board, please. And uh, further questions arise from that, we can, uh, the board can determine if they'd like to, to ask the questions, but um, this will be a little bit clunky since we're online, but if anybody is on this call that would like to speak in favor of this project, the new KFC, uh, now's your time. Please go ahead. Uh, identify yourself with your name and address, please. Just wait a minute or two if anybody wants to jump in. Don't forget to unmute. Okay. Um, not hearing anybody uh, for. Um, so let's uh, call for anybody who would like to speak in opposition to the project. Uh, please uh, identify yourself, name and address. Paul, do we even have anybody else on the call? I'm clicking it, not even seeing any uh.
That's, yeah, that's the same I was seeing too. I don't think so. I think everyone that's on the call has spoken.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Okay, well, we'll um, uh, we'll um, no, normally we'd have the applicant uh, speak up again about any issues raised from the public, but we didn't have that this time. So what I'd like to do is um, go ahead and turn it back over uh, to the board uh, for discussion. And um, maybe uh, we'd start off with Ms. McBride uh, for her remarks.
Uh, thank you. Um, I do have a couple more questions, uh, either for Paul or for Sarah. Um, so uh, what would the staff prefer? Would you prefer the two trees up front and the two in the back or all four up on Beauchamp where we get the full bang for the Beauchamp plans?
So I think there's, definitely should be two trees up front, at least to mimic what Krispy Kreme has done, because you can start to get properties, you know, on both sides of Beauchamp. Across the street, you have IHM, you have Arby's IHM. And um, the, or Keynes is, you have a series of trees. On the other side, you also have a series of trees starting with um, Dewey's and that development there. So I think there should definitely be some, at least two trees up front. Um. Krispy Kreme, I put their other two trees behind their sign. I still don't know if that's, you know, the best location for the trees. I agree with Mr. Oakley. They, they may not, you know, do that well. So I think at least two on the, on the street. Um, even the fact would probably be a good compromise as well.
Okay. Uh, and then do you know what the fence is for Krispy Kreme?
According to Google tree view, it looks like a white vinyl fence.
I, I think it's a white vinyl also, just looking at some of the pictures. So um, I just want to um, correct that. And then I guess my last question for you is um, well, two things. One, you were going to give me the, the site for the uh, access drive in the C Residence District?
Yes, it's Article two point twelve, comma, capital D, comma, eight, comma, lowercase d. You have it on my screen if you wanted me to show it or read it to you.
That's okay. I just wanted to reference that. And then uh, the other question that I had for you had to do with, with the lighting. Um, what, what is the maximum height they're allowed to have?
Twenty-four feet is the maximum for the total pole and base, twenty-four feet total.
Okay, even in a residential district?
The, the key is measuring the foot candles at the property line. Um, that's, so when they're adjacent to a residential property line, it's point one foot candle.
Okay, well, because they're not taking the point one from the residential district line, the property line. I'm assuming they're going to consolidate. But um, the, the lighting plan that we have shows, you know, more than point one foot candles on residentially zone property. And it also shows a twenty-four foot high fixture in a residential district.
Correct.
So how, how do we?
I, we generally take it from the residential property, the, the property line, um, not necessarily interior zoning districts, but the property line. And they were at zero to point one at that southern property line. There was an area that was higher to the uh, west near the condominiums.
Right. No, I understand that. Um, and do you feel then that the, the, the PUD then gives us the ability to approve what I'm going to consider a modification to those lighting requirements since this is Zone C Residence?
Again, we didn't feel like a variance was needed. Um, we've, the, the pole itself is probably less bright than a street light in a residence district, especially when it's a point one foot candles at the property line. Um, and we weren't considering this parking lot lighting. Um. Well, I, I mean, Sarah, take that back. It is parking lot lighting, um, but it was point one at the property line.
Okay.
It, I mean, if, if you feel more comfortable, the zoning commission feels more comfortable, that you can grant a variance for that with the PUD process. Uh, we didn't feel that variance was needed.
I'll, I'll let my, my fellow commission members weigh in on what they think on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I did want to follow up too on the dumpster enclosure. Someone had a question about the dumpster enclosure. Um, so the dumpster enclosure needs to meet the setback for the building in a retail area. So there is no setback to a retail, to retail property line. Uh, and in this particular case, it's a property line that's a township right-of-way property line. So I think it's a gray area. If you feel that it needs to be moved off the property line, the typical setback to a residential property line would be five feet. Um. There is a residential use on the other side, but that's also where their dumpster is located. That's why we did put in the one photo for you. Um, their dumpster is located almost in the exact same location.
Paul, before we continue, do we need to close the public hearing?
Uh, it, it's up to the zoning commission.
Uh, yes, well.
Sorry, I'm showing up as call-in user.
Of course, we can do that. Do we need to do that by a motion?
Uh, no, you don't need to do it by a motion.
Okay, well, my intent, my intent was, and I apologize because I didn't say it, since we didn't have any further a public comment, uh, was to close the public portion. So thanks for the reminder on that, Sarah, so we get that right. So the public portion is, was closed. We are now in a discussion among the zoning commissioners. Um, Ms. McBride, did you have any more uh, discussion comments?
No, I mean, I think it's a good reuse of the, of the property. I just am kind of stumbling over this, you know, the rear portion still being C Residential District, but it's really being used for commercial purposes. And I'm just, I'm kind of struggling with how we deal with that and we're not setting a precedence for somebody else.
Yeah, there's a little, there's a few funny nuances on this. Um, well, we'll see what everybody else thinks. Uh, Mr. Henson, let's see what your thoughts are on this. Can you go ahead?
Yeah, I mean, my initial thoughts were centered around the, the monument sign and its size and the landscaping trees in the front. And I agree with staff. Um, I, I like uh, sticking to having at least two out front. It does help uh, continue building up what we want to see Beauchamp look like. And you know, it's uh, every opportunity that we have to, to be able to do that, um, makes a lot of sense and is really valuable overall. Um, the applicant said that he's willing, able, and already has addressed the signage issues. Um, the lighting issues um, are coming into context and uh, the enclosure for the trash, it um, you know, it's not typical that we have uh, the applicant on here able to make all of the changes that we're requesting on the spot. Um. And so as long as we have all of those commitments in place, I don't have anything else to say.
Okay. Um, okay, Mr. Lewis, what, what are you thinking? What's your thoughts?
Um, no, I agree. As long as we have a, a tight motion, uh, the applicant has agreed to uh, become uh, compliant with uh, our standard zoning. So it wasn't in the original application as it came to us to review before this, this meeting, but it is, or it will be uh, at the end. So I'm, I'm very comfortable.
Okay, that sounds good. Mr. Gothard, um, save the best for last, I guess, or the last for last.
Last for last. Definitely the last for last. Thank you, Mr. Ella. I, I think I have some of the same concerns as Ms. McBride on the access drive. And making sure any motion that's put forth to the commission states that, you know, it is an exception. If we allow it, including the lights, maybe in that motion, you know, it is, we state is truly just an access drive and no parking would be permitted on that. So at some future time, it doesn't turn into a parking lot if the access drive doesn't continue on to the east. And I also agree with the other commission members about at least two seat, street trees along Beauchamp Avenue. And where they're distributed across the rest of the parcel, you know, that's up to staff and I think the applicant. So that's really the only comments I had.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. And um, I have two comments. One is, we talked a little bit earlier about the building materials and then the applicant commented that there were a variety of building materials. Um, I'll just throw it out there. Did the zoning commission want to see a revised um, elevation drawing or are we comfortable um, you know, with what we see here? Because I, I believe if we go ahead with the approval, we'll see essentially, you know, what we're seeing here. Um, I'll just throw that out. Does anybody have any thought on, on that point?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that um, if we adopt staff's recommendations, that there's going to be uh, additional building materials that are going to be included on the elevations. And I would leave that up to, to staff. My opinion is to leave that up to staff's um, review and discretion.
And Mr. Ella, this is John. Um, you know, on the elevation drawings, there is a little bit of conflicting information. On the west and north elevations, there is a keynote number twenty that says brick running bond for that lower band. It's not on the other two elevations, but then there's other notes that reference Ephesus and what color it is. So I think we could put in a motion to, you know, make sure it is the brick running bond.
I think that's a good suggestion. Okay. Uh, and the other uh, comment I had was um, the uh, question of the access road aside, I guess I would be o- okay with um, relying on staff's interpretation on that. Um, but with the comment that um, I did appreciate that the um, this drawing put in quite a substantial uh, additional amount of drive or rear access road that they, they technically didn't really need uh, not come in staff for uh, putting that together. Uh, because it looks like there, there might be a, a, a good plan to get over to the light. Um, on, I think it's King Louie over there. So uh, they, they did go. So they, they did go above and beyond to, to put that rear access road in there. Yeah, we'll give them access to the light hopefully eventually, but I did appreciate that. I guess that, that's the only comment I had. Then one quick question for you on a motion. We'd be moving on the PUD part of it, but do we wrap into that? I should know this, but I'll just ask, do we wrap into that? The motion, whether we approve or deny the variance as well? Do we do that all in one motion?
Yes, yes, that's correct. I, I did want to show, because I, I don't want there to be too much confusion on this. And it's good discussion because we had it with the applicant as well when they came in for their pre-application meeting. So I want to just clarify again what staff's interpretation was regarding the access drive. So I'm going to try to share my screen and bear with me because I'm always not the best at this, especially when. Thanks there. Leave. Just bear with me because this is page. See if it's going to share or not. Here we go. Okay, so this is, can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay, so this is page 16 of the zoning resolution. And it's the article that I quoted for Ms. McBride, it's Article 212D8 and then lowercase d. So in the left-hand column there for lowercase d, this is under the border zoning appeals section of the zoning resolution. But as a PUD hearing, you are authorized as a zoning commission to either grant special zoning certificates and you're also authorized to grant variances such as for the freestanding sign or deny variance for the freestanding sign. So item D is to authorize but grant special zoning certificate after a public hearing to ingress and egress to an office, limited office, commercial, and this is a commercial or industrial district through a more restricted district. So this article, and I agree, it's, it's best to include it in the motion if, if you choose to do that for clarification. But this allows the more restricted district, which is the C Residence District, allowing ingress and egress to the commercial district. So that's what gives you authority to do that. As far as the lighting is concerned, we do have parking lots in residential zoning districts, you know, churches, schools. And it's staff's interpretation that those lighting requirements are spelled out in the parking section of our zoning resolution. So even though it's zoned, single family, the zoning requirement in our interpretation is the foot candle at the property line. In the property line, whether it's, you know, residence zoning or if it's a residence use. So to the south, it's a residence use and residence zoning. To the west, it is a residential use and a commercial zoning. So we feel that it is applicable in both of those property lines as well as the property line to the east is a commercial zoning. So it would be point seven five there. So I don't know if that helps clarify or not, but that's our interpretation that we gave to the applicant and, and our guidance to them when we were evaluating their request. And Sarah, you can put that shape line back up if you need to.
Okay, Paul, good job getting those zoning sites on the fly. That's a lot of page turning you have to do. So I, I guess if, if there are any other comments, please speak up. Otherwise, perhaps we could have a, a motion on this case.
Mr. Chair, I've got one other comment that I apologize, I forgot about earlier. In the staff recommendations concerning the signage, they referenced the Beachmont Plan having us, the monument sign not to exceed 10 foot in height and 60 square feet. The zoning code says 15 foot in height and 60 square feet. Could someone elaborate on the differences between the two?
Yes, Sarah, do you, are you sharing your screen or do you want to share the PowerPoint?
You still have your screen up, but I can put it back on the PowerPoint if you want.
If you want to do that, because I'm afraid I'm going to just shut the whole thing down and I don't want.
Give me one second.
No, probably.
Can you all hear me? Okay, I lost sound for a minute.
Yes, we can hear you fine.
So Mr. Gothard, I know we come to this discussion every time there's a PUD. The, our design guidelines recommend a lower monument style sign, especially for this neighborhood. So that's the, that's where the 10 feet comes from, because if you stay at 10 feet, you stay underneath the power lines. If you are at 15 feet, there's a good chance you're going to be up close to the power lines.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, the zoning resolution does allow you to go up to 15 feet, but our design guidelines and our Beachmont Plan recommend a lower, lower height.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, great. Would somebody like to make a motion on this case?
Well, I have got a page full here, so I've been writing right as you could all see. So I would propose a motion for the commission's consideration that we approve case 2-2021 for 7857 Beachmont Avenue for Kentucky Fried Chicken. That we would approve that case based on the staff recommendation of their PUD evaluation criteria, Article 4.1G, items one through 12, and subject to the conditions recommended by staff, one through seven. And that would include denial of the variance request from Section 5.5G-1, as well as based on the standards for PUD plan approval, items one through 14, and also subject to the following additional conditions. That one, the commission approves a special zoning certificate to allow for lighting, one lighting fixture and an access drive only within the C Residence District per Article 2-12, capital D, eight, small d. Two, that all mechanical equipment would be screened from view of public right of way and residential uses. Three, that two, I'm sorry, three, that two Skyline Honey Locusts be located adjacent to the building as indicated on the landscape plan and that two trees be located on the Beachmont Avenue frontage with the other remaining required two trees being located to the rear of the store to provide additional buffer for the residential uses. Four, that the waste enclosure is to be brick, not EFS, consistent with some of the building materials and that it be located five feet off the eastern property line. And that five, that the six foot fence shown as a buffer to the C residential uses to the south be white vinyl, consistent with the Krispy Kreme fence.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. McBride, before we roll call, can I make sure that I have everything?
Yes.
All right. So based off the recommendations of the P, of staff, of the PUD criteria, subject to conditions one through seven, recommended from staff, including the denial of the variance for the freestanding sign and subject to the additional conditions. One, that the commission approves a special zoning certificate for lighting and an access drive in a residential district. Two, that the screening of mechanical be, that the mechanical screening, I have that the mechanical screening be screened from residential areas.
About the mechanical equipment be screened from view of public right of ways and residential uses.
Okay. Three, that two Skyline Honey Locusts be planted adjacent to the building as located on the plan, as well as two planted along Beachmont Avenue and two planted somewhere else on the property. Is that correct?
I said to the rear of the building.
Okay, so not, rather than adjacent to the rear?
Instead of saying two trees other, other, otherwise on the site, it was to be two to the rear.
Okay. And then four, that the garbage enclosure be brick and located five feet off the property line?
Correct.
Five, that the privacy fence be a white vinyl material, consistent with Krispy Kreme.
Six.
Okay, all right, very good. Thanks for that clarification. So we have the, the motion from Ms. McBride. We've got that clear. Mr. Henson seconded that. And Mr. Henson, you're not good with that second. Speak up. He's good with the second. So we have a motion, a second.
All right, and roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes. Hey. Well, that is, that's all on our agenda. Thank you very much to the applicant for coming to the meeting and, and presenting. We really appreciate it. Paul, I'll kick it back to you and Sarah or Stefano. Do you have anything else for us before we click off tonight? Are we going to be back next month? What do you guys think?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We will most likely have one or two cases for next month. So the meeting will be on April the 26th. So if you know you won't be able to attend, just please let one of us know. I think probably it's still virtual at this point, but I'm not for certain. But we'll plan on that and we'll let you know if something changes.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, Paul, if the only case is going to be that Compton Addy, I will have to recuse myself because I represent them in other areas.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you. I know that's for certain unless it gets delayed, you know, at the regional planning.
Okay, Paul, do we need a motion to adjourn then? Is that correct?
I think so.
Is there a motion to adjourn? All right, there was a motion second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, ahs. Okay. All right. Thanks a lot, everybody. Anything else?
Thank you all.
Okay, good night.
Thank you. Thank you.